Project will increase species diversity by keeping the chimney soaks in the area. Materials for the chimney swift is plywood chimney swift house is plywood lumber siding, rebar angled steel insulation and concrete. Chimney swift will be the chimney swift house will be 12 feet tall, about two feet wide. Location chimney swift house will be built within the blue circle up at the top of the map. An exact position has not been decided yet. But I'll be talking to Ron Ritchie from City Works and Scott Dudak, the city manager. Permits and and inspect because the house is under 15 feet, you'll not need a permit. Scott Coyle from and then inspectors looked over the building plans and has given me five suggestions which I will follow. These suggestions have to do with angled steel or the concrete is poured and the rebar. It's mainly about the installation of the birdhouse. I will contact him with any questions when we're about to install. Fundraising, I have several different ways of fundraising. I planned to fundraise at a restaurant that asked to be approved. Home Depot said they would offer a hundred dollar discount, but they could offer more. But we have to talk about that after the proposal has been approved. Councilman Scott Thurston said he'd like to contribute. Some guys from where my dad works should probably make a donation. Friends and family will also make probably also make a donation. Also, any money left over from the project will go back to the park and rec department. Timeline, I'm planning to have the proposal approved by May. I'm planning to write the project plan by summer. I'm planning to finish the project by the end of summer as well as the report. Are there any questions?
Any questions from any council member?
Hey Robbie, how much are you looking for? How much is it going to be that you need?
I don't think I will need any. Any money from the park and rec department.
No, I'm just curious on just how much this project is costing.
Oh, um, the whole project probably about eight hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Robbie, did you actually go out and solicit? Contributions, donations, because you know, I would like to make a contribution myself.
So would I.
I haven't done any fundraising yet.
Well, it sounds like you're doing it right now. So you got three of us.
Why not?
Four of us that would like to make a contribution. Actually, five of us that would like to make a contribution to the to the project.
Thank you, but I have to have my proposal approved before I can get any donations.
Oh, okay. So if once you get it approved, if you can come back to us and we would like to make some donations here from the council.
Okay, thank you.
If that would be helpful. Any other questions for Robbie? Looks like a very good project. Are the neighbors, it looks like it's going to be back, what is it, the north side of?
Correct.
Southwood, are there neighbors? It looks like there's right up to possibly close to where the.
Um, we, we, we did ask that question at the last park and rec meeting whether it needed to have community approval and because of the height of the of the structure and the size of the structure, there did not need to be one done.
Okay, good. And I noticed burwolds, is that burwolds roofing or is that a burwalled bird?
Burwalled roofing. Yeah, they took their chimneys down.
Well, they had a chimney there. They had a chimney in Southwood?
No, that, no, there's no chimney in Southwood. So at the roofing company, they took their chimney down.
Okay. Sounds good, looks like a very good project, very excited and you went to park and rec and explain to them, it sounds like.
We ran, we ran Robbie through the wringer a couple of different months worth.
Did you? Good, good. So good luck with your Eagle Scout project. We look forward to seeing the result and once it's approved, come back to us and we'll we'll make some donations here.
Mayor, I think they would be looking for formal approval from the council as part of his approval process.
Okay.
So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposal that Robbie has set forth for consideration and and open conversation.
Okay, so motion for approval of the chimney. Chimneys, what are they called? Swift.
Swift.
Swift. For Robbie. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by council member Peterson, any discussion? Looks good Robbie, we'll make the motion here and we get it all approved and you're on your way. So the motion is there. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye.
It's approved.
Robbie, congratulations.
Thank you.
You've, you've, I've, I've watched you go through this for the last four or five months. You've done a phenomenal job, you've grown through this whole process, you've become much more comfortable as a presenter and been able to put this, this whole project together and just high regards to you and we'll miss your mom. But congratulations.
Congratulations Robbie. So good luck with it. Anxious to see what it looks like when you get all done.
Take some photos.
Okay. So I didn't quite understand the burwolds. So the chimneys.
I think there's chimneys that are up on their property that these birds, that's what they utilize.
They were using their chimneys for them.
Yeah.
Got it, got it.
One, one of the large areas chimneys that was removed a few years ago was the chimney at Richardson School. That was one that had a huge population of these birds in it and that that chimney was removed with part of the renovations up there.
Okay, interesting.
Is that something that like the high school, they're going to do this big remodel? Is that something we can say you gotta have some chimneys up there? They're not, they're not structural, but just, you know, is that something that we can do? I don't know, maybe, all right, we'll talk about it.
So we have the consent agenda, that's the March sixteenth workshop meeting minutes, the March sixteenth regular meeting minutes, general accounts payable of seven hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents, the EDA accounts payable of one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-one cents, HRA accounts payable of seven hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents, and the authorized general fund transfer to pandemic response fund. Is there a motion, is anything that anybody would like to take out at this time, they can? Councilmember Thurston?
Yeah, item C and D.
C and D. So remove C and D and we'll add that to the city business and action items. So at this time, motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by council member Cole, second by council member Wong, any discussion? Not all of us in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Meeting open to the public. Do we have anybody in the audience? Who would like to address?
You have one, John has his hand up. Welcome, John.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to bring up what I found out today. You can file it in the useless information. It turned out that again, the announcement that we received via email about the agenda for the council meeting and the workshop had previous versions and no indication of what the other version was, what was changed. So I contacted Lisa who worked with Jenny, who the information came back that the software is now producing two notifications even though there's only one notification or one agenda posted. And that we will have to live with that until someone who takes care of that software in the software vendor raises their hand and said, what's your problem? Or that we get replaced by open gov. So all this work that had, that I have done to try to get this notification posted somewhere, which did happen on the March sixteenth meeting for the workshop anyway, because there was the addition of the downtown graphics. It's kind of a waste of time, you're just fighting with something that can't be solved.
Okay.
Very frustrating, very frustrating.
So there was no agenda changes, what you're telling me, John? That it was just?
There wasn't.
Correct.
It just produces two copies. And by producing two copies, the one for each of the, I mean, a cop, two copies for the workshop and two copies for the regular meeting, that then results when you click on it to see an agenda, it asks you whether you want the previous version or just the agenda. And that happened as a result of the software producing that second notification of the agenda for each of the items automatically.
Okay, well hopefully we're gonna be able to solve that at some point here, not sure.
Is there a date?
I don't have, I don't have a date, John, but I, I'm sure they're, they're working on it. We'll be working on it. Thank you.
That's just, yeah, that's it for the day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have, anybody else?
Oh, that, that's all.
Okay. City business action items and recommendations, I'll turn it over to city manager, Dudek.
Mayor Council, the first item we have is the 2021 fee schedule and that goes back to the conversation that we had about the ball field use and registration fees. And we've, the, the previous schedule had multiple fees in it with, with varying differences and a lot of it seemed to be tied back to our, our organized play that we, we organized ball teams within the city and there was charges associated with that. As you can see on the bottom of that page 107 in your packet of the fee schedule, there was a ball field rental and we had softball league at seventy-two dollars and baseball field prep at twenty-five and contract league softball at seventy-five, only a three dollar difference. Softball tournament, one twenty-five and again, a Sunday church league at seventy-two. So to streamline those and have a clear understanding what's what, the recommendation is that we would have one, one fee and that would be the seventy-five dollars for the field rental. And this again would only be charged to adult leagues or for-profit unorganized, our, our local nonprofit teams, the athletic associations and those we would not be charging as we've talked about that at a, at a previous meeting. We would not propose to, to charge those teams. If there was any additional field maintenance to be done after hours, after our public works hours, so we would provide those fields ready for use during, during the normal business hours. If there was a request to drag fields or anything after hours or on weekends, it would be a hundred and fifty dollar fee for up to three hours of field use and that would cover our, basically cover our overtime for bringing someone in for that. So this really streamlines things and has a clear understanding of what the field rental fees would be. So again, seventy-five dollars per field per day and then that hundred and fifty dollar charge for maintenance if it's after hours.
Any questions for city manager? Matt, motion to approve the 2021 fee schedule and the ball field rental fee amendment?
So moved. So moved.
Moved by council member Thurston.
Second.
Second by council member Peterson, any discussion?
Uh, one quick question, we're not talking, this is just ball fields, we're not, we're not talking building rentals.
No, that's correct. Ball field only.
Perfect, thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye, motion is approved. City manager, Dudek.
Next item is the, to update our, our park, park fund donation brochure, which has been in place for a number of years and staff was going through that, we were looking at updating, making sure that costs were updated with actual cost of, of items today. So in looking at that, proposing to make a, a couple changes on, on this and that would be the increase, the donation for benches from a thousand dollars to twelve hundred dollars. The picnic tables were at fifteen hundred dollars, we would leave those at that same price. The tree donation that's on there also would remain at the same two fifty. The shelter donation is the big one that has a big increase, was previously listed at fifteen thousand dollars and that would be proposed to move to thirty thousand dollars. It's a significant increase, but truly the cost of, of doing that, if we're really looking at that is, you know, the material cost and concrete cost and everything else to do that. So that's where that, that number has, has come back from to, to recommend moving to that cost. All these donations would be available again through our online platform. You know, we've never had a, a shelter donation other than through the Rotary Club or an organization like that who we've worked with and very graciously, they've done many tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars at Rotary Park. But that remains an unavailable option if somebody's interested in that. The, the bench, the bench cost that moving them to that twelve hundred dollars, that really just covers the cost of the bench, that doesn't cover, you know, installation cost or if we're pouring concrete, but really covering the cost of the bench. So that, that minor adjustment on the benches is the reason for that. And then they, there was a copy of the brochure in there and this brochure would be updated, but they, you know, just shown what the previous brochure looked like and those couple items that were crossed out for pricing, but that would be recrafted and reprinted.
I'm assuming Scott, the shelter donation to thirty thousand dollars, that would be the standard shelter.
The, the open air shelters.
Open air shelter and they're all slightly different from each other. So it'd be kind of a thirty thousand dollar minimum?
Correct, correct, and, and that's based off of a, there, there's a size that goes along with that, that it's, it's set for, but yeah, there would be a, obviously we would work with the donor, donor on that cost, but there's a normal, they'd be, be similar to the shelters that were built at Rotary Park or at Silver Lake, those open air shelters.
So do we put a thirty thousand dollar minimum just to keep it kind of open, open-ended?
Yeah, we could certainly put some language in there to, to cover, you know, more detail what that thirty thousand is paying for.
I'm assuming if somebody wants to build a shelter, maybe you want to make, it could be bigger in some other areas.
Yeah.
Say call for pricing.
Yeah, right, with this market, absolutely. But on the flip side, if we, you know, if we had a thirty thousand dollar donation, I think we would really consider that because that would really be a helpful add to our park system if we could get a thirty thousand dollar donation to, to put a shelter up.
Any other questions for city manager?
Does that thirty thousand also include labor costs?
No, that was, I mean, the concrete, that would be concrete being poured by a contractor, but really material costs and what that was based off of is, this, this estimate came from our public works department on material cost and them putting up the shelter. Not pouring the concrete, but them physically putting up the shelter after the slab was poured and purchasing the material.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not the motions for update the park fund donation brochure, is there a motion? Moved by council member Cole?
Second.
Second by council member Wong, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye, motion is approved. City manager, Dudek, we're going to add items C and D. And C is general accounts payable of seven hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents. Called a question would be council member Thurston.
Yeah, I'm on page ninety-one. Torn more towards the tops is North St. Paul Historical SOC, I'm assuming that's North St. Paul Historical Society, says three thousand dollars, it says twenty twenty-one stipend. What exactly is that in regards to?
That's, that's correct, that's a, just that, it's an annual, an annual stipend that we've paid to or given to the historical society on an annual basis going back many years, three thousand dollars per year stipend to the historical society.
Okay. And then this same page up a couple, this is, has to do with the termination settlement, I'm not trying to be annoying here and do something like me typically, we've never had to poll a single item, but I'm just gonna, you know, because this is included in all the bills, I just want to make note that I voted against this and I don't support the settlement, but you know, in the spirit of paying the bills, I plan to vote to approve it, so I just wanted to clarify on that item.
Okay. So the motion is for the general accounts payable of seven hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by council member Wong?
Second.
Second by council member Cole, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye. And the next item is the EDA accounts payable of one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-one cents and council member Thurston?
Yeah.
Called a question?
This is on page one oh one. This is February utility bill and I know I asked about this a couple of months ago and there was two utility bills and we got some clarification that that was the Amcon construction in lieu of paying rent to the Lily News organization, that they would pay the utility bills for that building to have their construction office. I thought it was kind of odd that the city is paying that out of the EDA, but we were told that Amcon was going to be reimbursing the city. So has Amcon reimbursed the city for the previous two utility bills that were paid?
Not, not as of yet, we're looking at, we'll be rectifying the whole thing, we're also talking right now about the likelihood of moving the construction office out of the building because there's potentially a, a purchase of the billing that, that could be happening. So we're going to be, we're working on that right now and, and if they move out or when they move out here, but then that, those bills that were accumulated during their time there will be paid to the city and we'll close that account out completely.
Okay, so I mean, absent of, I know this was kind of a, whatever you want to call it, an old school verbal agreement, but there was no actual contract, I just want to make sure it stated for the record that that's their intent to reimburse the city because this seems to be kind of a, an odd thing, this is an agreement between two private parties and somehow the city's paying the bill here out of their EDA, but just wanted to make that point made. Okay.
So the motion is for the EDA accounts payable of one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-one cents, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by council member Wong? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cole. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Councilmember Thurston?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye, motion is approved. Reports of city manager, city manager, Dudek.
Council, several items, we talked about earlier this evening at the workshop, maybe I'll start off with that one with the spring cleanup that we're, we're working on planning. So just for the, for viewing audience and stay tuned for, you'll see this coming out on our website and newsletters and all of our different medias, but again, planning a city cleanup event for Saturday, May eighth. The event would run from eight AM to one PM and that would be at our public works building, would be the drop-off location. And we're, we're planning many, many events to go along with that, not only the general bulky item disposal, electronics disposal, appliances, we'll, we're planning a shredded event for, for document shredding, just a whole host of, of services to make available for residents on that day. Working with the food shelf and maybe having some of their, their activities going on that day for distributing food out to, to the public. So stay tuned for information for that, for that day. And we're also planning the citywide garage sale to coincide on that weekend also, that would start on Thursday, May sixth, around Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so May sixth through the eighth. And we will get that up on our website and also they would be able to sign up, register for that through our open gov platform with that program also would be, we're looking at the registration fee of, of ten dollars for the, for the garage sales would give you an access to a, a complete list of all the registered garage sales throughout the city. A North St. Paul branded yard sign for a garage sale for your yard and then also a eco kit from our electric utility would be part of that also. So a good value for that and, and a good, great service, so hope for good weather on the May sixth through the eighth.
How are they going to do the queuing of that? So you're going to have shredding and all those different things. Are they all going to come into the?
Well, have a big circular area, they'll come in and circle about and we'll have lineup and we'll put out a map and everything, we're lining up and things will be, you know, we haven't done it for a number of years at our public works locations since we did the bulk collection, but in past, we've, we've done it in that location, it's a little bit different now because of the streets have been reconfigured down there, so we're not blocking, you know, some of the access on North St. Paul Drive coming in off of McKnight Road, so we'll get those things worked out, but yeah, that'll be, and historically, we've had a lot of people line up for it, but we'll, we'll make plans accordingly. Okay. Last eve, maybe I'll let council member Cole talk about our meeting last, last night with the Silver Lake later on, I'll, I'll skip that one, let him give the report there. Just wanted to mention that we have a couple of pretty significant retirements coming up. Our police chief, Tom Loff, has announced his retirement, so Tom will be retiring the end of May, so that's, that's upcoming. We also have Sergeant, Sergeant Lang will be retiring and his retirement will be the end of April here. So many years of service, our chief Loff has thirty-two years of service with the city and Sergeant Lang, twenty-seven years of service. So we've got those two retirements coming up and a lot of activities with making personnel changes to, to fill those and other, other personnel changes within the police department, so you'll see some of that moving forward. Let's see, citywide park cleanup, we are going to look into that, we have not heard any communication from the park commission or, we had a lot of help in the past with that from the high school, from the track team, so we're following up with that and seeing what the high school's interest is or availability under the circumstances of the COVID, if that can be planned here in the upcoming future. I think, I think the other item, again, I'll let council member Cole talk about the Silver Lake Association. And then work continues, I mean, on all of our developments, you see the Anchor View apartment that's under construction on the south side of the Anchor Drive, they're pouring concrete down there and doing footing work and moving along. Unfortunately, we've had some rain that slows them down at times, but that's moving and we're, we're nearing closer and closer to a quick trip start in, into May, plan for that. The project in the downtown is moving along very rapidly. You know, windows are in and they're progressing with interior wiring and drywall was even delivered, so things are really moving along well down there. There's been work as, as they can on the exterior of the building, doing storm sore work and connections with that around the outside of the building. things are really moving along well down there. There's been work as, as they can on the exterior of the building, doing storm sewer work and connections with that around the outside of the building. Some of the things that people will see in the downtown, our Public Works was down and we, we blackened out the yellow parking striping in the parking stalls last summer. We ended up making those at a 90-degree parking because we had one-way traffic down there and that's caused a lot of problems now that traffic is back to two-way parking. So temporarily we've just blackened out all those stalls and let, left them open for, for generalized parking. In the future, we will, we'll be restriping that, but probably waiting till, you know, construction gets farther along. But I don't remember if we mentioned this. We did present our, our case to the, for state aid funding for the downtown. Because in the past, we've never been able to use state aid funding due to the parking in the downtown. We were successful with that, with that case. And so in the future, we will be able to use state aid funding in the downtown. But because of that, we have to change our parking angling from 60-degree to 45-degree. So that would facilitate restriping all those stalls anyway also. So all that work will be upcoming and hopefully weather continues to progress and we can get back to finishing up the downtown sidewalk work and other related street work. Have the upcoming business association meetings coming up and plan to take our plan that we reviewed here at the council of those downtown streetscape and get input from our businesses and that on the streetscape and movable tables and chairs and planters. So we can make a final decision on that. Many things going on. If you have any questions, let me know anytime.
Any questions for city manager?
Oh, and other than I feel like I got an awful lot of pressure on me now.
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure on you. All right. Thank you, Scott. General business, actually reports of council, commissions and committees. I'll start with Councilmember Cole.
I have too. Park and Recreation Commission had their, had a meeting on March 24th. I want to commend the, the, the commission. They all rolled up their sleeves. It was almost a three-hour meeting. They're starting the process of prioritizing and getting the park improvement plan in place. They were able to prioritize basically year one and year two projects. We're looking to do year two and three, as well as year three through five projects and goals to be discussed at the upcoming, at the next upcoming meetings. It was agreed upon that staff is going to take over ownership of updating the park improvement plan. We had talked about having a third party take, take it over, but staff, staff stepped up and we're going to go ahead and have that done internally. So continues to be more. The, the, the meetings get a little long-winded, but they're, they're good, positive, positive meetings with, with a lot of great dialogue. As Scott referenced last night, oh, I'm sorry. Next upcoming meeting is April 28th. It'll be 6:30 via Zoom. The PNR does have a goal of being able to get out in the parks, being back out into the communities. As soon as we can determine how we're be able to do that and still be, be aligned with state guidelines. They are looking forward to getting out in the parks and enjoying the summers and just exactly what the Park and Rec is, is set up to do. Last night I was able to join the Silver Lake Improvement Association meeting. There are a lot, a lot of great topics. It was my first introduction to, to the group. I appreciate their patience with some of my questions. A lot of good, positive things going, going on around the lake. One of the things that was brought up is they are going to conduct a week-long cleanup, starting April 17th and running through the 24th. And that's open for anyone in the community to, to help along with the residents in, in the Silver Lake area. The information, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, will be posted on, on the, on the emails that are sent out. So we'll be able to help get the communication out there. There was, they will have signs up as well. They'll have bags and gloves and everything will be at a residence home to, you know, for anybody to come out and be able to set that up and help, help out as well. There was conversation around the dredging. That one was kind of new information to me. I don't know if we've gotten anywhere with the watershed district. I know there's a meeting this week concerning that as well. Scott, you're probably more the, the in-house expert on that than I.
Yeah. So what that is, is that we've been talking about that for some time. So Valley Branch Watershed is going to take it up with their, at their meeting and talk about it. To, to decide if they will, how much they will fund, if they will fund the whole, the whole project, or if they're going to be looking for a cost share between Valley Branch and the city of North St. Paul. It's been something that's been talked about for a long time and really to get it moved anywhere, we need to do these samplings to determine if we truly have a lot of sediment and that from the normal lake bottom. So that'll be coming, I believe that's next Thursday. Valley Branch will be discussing that at their, at their meeting.
One, one other topic that came out of that is it sounds like the aeration of the lake. Ramsey County had been footing the bill for, to keep the lake aerated so we don't have fish die off. It sounds like moving forward that Ramsey County will no longer be funding that. So we're looking to what the watershed district as well as the city be able to, to, to help out in, in, in funding?
Yeah. The proposal is that, it hasn't yet to be worked out. I mean, there, it's, you know, technically it's on the Maplewood side because the park is in Maplewood. So the proposal, I think, is from Ramsey County that they would, they would continue to do some maintenance on it, but no longer take, have ownership and total responsibility for it. Valley Branch would become the owner of the aeration system. And then there was talk about the city of North St. Paul and Maplewood splitting the cost of the electric consumption on it. But none of that has been finalized or this, they've been kicking this can around for the last couple of years on it. And so we'll see where that's going to go. But the county has, it sounds like they've, the county has said after this year, we're done. We're, we're not going to, other than maybe helping with some maintenance or things like that on a, on a labor standpoint only. So that's got to be worked out because as Councilmember Cole said, we certainly don't want to see a, a fish kill in the lake because everybody's turning a blind eye to this. So it's, it definitely has to get worked out between now and next fall, next winter.
Kind of weird to have those conversations when ice has only been out for a couple of weeks, but, but you got a plan.
So the aeration is only on during the, during the winter?
Just in the wintertime when the oxygen levels get to a low, low level.
Same with Casey. Casey does the, I don't, I don't know who funds the Casey Lake aeration, but.
We do. The city does that. Initially, the aeration, the equipment itself was donated by the DNR when we started it some years ago. But since that point forward, it's been city's cost to, to install it, maintain it and, and operate it.
Uh, next meeting is June 7th at 6:30 via Zoom. It's another, it's, it's another association that would love to get outside. But for right now, the next meeting is going to be June 7th via Zoom. And Scott, are we going to post that on meetings or is, or are they to be directed to their Facebook page for?
Yeah. So because again, because that, that group is not a, a formal commission of the city. They're their own association. So what they've asked us or agreed to do is they'll provide us with all their meeting dates. We'll list it on our website and then we'll also have a link to their website so that people can, you know, link and go right to their website to get any further information about their, their meeting or their organizations.
I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Sure. On April 1st, the Planning Commission had a meeting via Zoom and it was also a public hearing for three different items. The first being a conditional use permit to construct a security entrance and additional administrative offices at Coern Elementary School. And the other being a conditional use permit and height variance to construct a three-story and 11-classroom addition to the North High School. And so we had, didn't have too many public comments. There were a few. But I would, you know, encourage council to take a look at some of the, those notes as there are some detailed plans in regards to the, the, the process and, and the construction. We did talk a lot about parking as a big discussion and we had discussed that here at council and I did let them know that that was a concern that would likely stick here. But they did seem to find a really nice flow, which I would encourage you all taking a look at.
That's, that's something if I, if I could comment on that, that was a great concern when we seen the plan coming through from a staff level. You know, the parking, you know, we think we went through this issue with parking with the elementary school when they did the work there and it's not so difficult because you, you don't have students driving. But when, with the high school and students driving and all that, and I think this plan called for 104 parking stalls to be eliminated. And so that's, was from a staff level was very concerning because we've got, you know, no parking signs for, in the residential streets. Basically almost all the way up to Richardson School because students would park out in those areas and we would get complaints from residents. So but they're, they're reconfiguring the entire parking lot and traffic flow and things like that. But again, a concern of the loss of 100 parking stalls. Be something to look at.
And then the next meeting would be May 6th and, and that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson? I'm kind of going around and scooting over and then going over, so.
The cheap seats. League of Minnesota Cities, of course, it's going to be no in-person annual conference, which is unfortunate for you guys because it's really fun to network. We were supposed to be down in Rochester. So it'll be virtual this year. So hopefully by next year, you guys can go to St. Paul. Minnesota Women of City Government is presenting Lessons Learned and that's going to be virtual. Just how this COVID situation was for the past year and that's on April 23rd. That's all I have. I was on vacation, but I, I ate a lot of shrimp. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, there was a joint EDA Planning Commission meeting that I was not able to attend. I can't call what date that was. Was that in March or was that in April? March, okay. But my understanding it was just kind of a general meeting to kind of try to discuss moving forward, how to better communicate within the commissions and, and future construction or development projects. And then our next EDA meeting is on Tuesday, April 13th. And that's also the same day as the Business Association meeting.
And I'll just add that EDA meeting, I thought it was a very good meeting, having the Planning Commission and, and the EDA. I think we, both groups benefited from hearing from each, each group and it's amazing how like you say, Councilmember Thorson, the communication is a very important piece now between the two commissions and I think they when they get together like that, it's good to hear from each side ways of trying to get that communication to each other. So I think it was a very good, a very good benefit. Other thing I had was I did reach out to a, a past council member, Councilmember Sonic in regards to art council. I think with the downtown, what's going on down there. He indicated back in the day that he would like to, you know, look at an arts council and so that's something that we, I think I'd like to maybe get on agenda here pretty quick because of I just read in today's paper that there's a, some sort of fund for people who are in the arts. And there's a lot of donations. And I think having that arts council in place, we can actually go after some of that, after some of that money for art downtown or it could be a mural. I, I don't know. I mean, it could be a lot of, lot of different things. So if I could add that, Scott, to future agenda. And that's all I had. General business, Councilmember Cole?
General business, I don't really have much of anything. I only had, had one comment with this beautiful of an Easter weekend that, that we had. There were lots of people out in the yards, cleaning, raking, picking up leaves. I have had several questions and people reached out to me as far as is there any possibility of getting the yard recycle picked up sooner than, I believe the schedule is the last week of April? And talk, talking to city manager Dudek, I know that that's not a possibility and it's not predicated on whether our ability to pick it up, it's the ability for, to, to drop it, to, to drop it off. And a lot of the compost facilities aren't open yet to be able to accommodate large vehicles.
Our hauler is very willing to do it. It's, it's again, where the, the compost site where it goes to. But it's scheduled to start the week of April 19th.
The hard part is the weather gets warmer and warmer.
Well, and that's just it. I mean, this year, everything is so much earlier than, than normal.
We're going to get spoiled here.
Hopefully we don't have that four-letter word happen again. No.
That's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Cole, or Wong? Sorry.
The second time.
I know, I know.
I, I do not have any, anything to add.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to mention that horrific event that happened on March 18th. That, those things aren't supposed to happen in my hometown. I was very disheartened. But I want to thank the quick response by our first responders, police and city manager Dudek and Mayor Furlong were right on there and the people appreciated it. That the guy, the suspect was apprehended and all was good and the full recovery to the folks at the pharmacy antique store. But what a sad day. Just a sad day. It really saddened me. So that's all I have.
We want to make sure that everyone knows that it was a random thing. It was somebody, an outsider.
Right. Anoka.
From Anoka, just mental health and, and all that. It was a.
But they put him away where he belongs. So I have, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Thorson?
Just to clarify, he's innocent until proven guilty, but he's been apprehended and he's charged from, from my understanding, but he's still awaiting trial. So just to clarify. I know I so came across an article that I sent to the mayor and city manager a couple, I think it was last month about the Emerald Ash Bore. The University of Minnesota has come across potentially a solution to the pest. Some sort of fungus, I guess, that will kill it. I don't know how that, the, didn't go into detail about if it needs to be applied or something, but I've noticed in my neighborhood by Casey Park, there's been some ash trees that have been getting cut down. I don't know the details on that, but it's been our policy that, you know, to prevent the spread of this, you know, invasive species and to protect the trees, we're cutting them down. Kind of seems counterproductive, but at the time that was, you know, the solution that the DNR had. It's, you know, it doesn't make sense to cut down a healthy tree to prevent it from dying because you're killing it. But this to me, it seems promising and I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, maybe it might make sense to put a hold on, you know, our policy of cutting down trees unless we know they're infested. But even if they are, I don't know if that means that they're doomed to be removed or if this new process can help revive it or whatnot, but.
And we can certainly have our forester come to the meeting and talk. But I, I think what they've been, at least when we can clarify this, but doing more of the trees that have been impacted to a point of, you know, ready for removal. And we did publish that information out in our newsletter on that. And also our intent was to continue the program that we've had the last couple of years with the, the treatment agency or the company through the city. Because it, it provides a discount to our residents. So we, we plan to continue that, to make that available. We've had a number of residents that have taken advantage of that. And I'll, I'll get our, our forester that could come and talk about that.
Yeah, except the key would, you should know what's going on. It'd be up to date what's, what's, what's happening. Cause I agree. I mean, if, if it's something that can be treated and save our trees, yeah, I'm more than happy to look into that.
You all have?
Yep.
Okay. And I just have to mention Councilmember Wong. Her and I actually went out to visit some of the businesses and maybe you want to just mention because it was your idea and we went out together and I thought it was a very, very positive thing.
Sure. Yeah. You know, after what occurred in Atlanta and the mass shootings, the fear that comes with that type of, of event tends to be quite high against local businesses and then also the subsequent events that happened in downtown. So I just reached out to Mayor Furlong and, and, you know, decided we should probably reach out to some of our businesses, say hello, check in, see how they're, they're doing, how they're responding, what, what's going on. So we probably went to, I don't know, probably like 15 or so different businesses. So they just really appreciated it. So you know, it, it impacted some of the businesses and it was good to hear kind of what people's issues are in regards to access. what people's issues are in regards to accessing, did they access some of the pandemic funds and, and things like that. So it was really informative and a good, positive, I think, relationship building opportunity.
So thank you for that. It was very good. We did have a meeting with the DNR via Zoom, maybe Soren, if you want, just get a, I know it's something that we've been talking about for a long time and it's probably going to be another workshop at some point or, or what, but.
So I did attend a meeting regarding DNR and the White Bear Lake issue, I think it was last week Friday. And the, the presentation was, was helpful. I would say that I'm not necessarily encouraged by it, but candidly, we haven't seen what decisions they're going to make. What's at play at this point is as a result of the lawsuit that was brought by some members of White Bear Lake against the DNR regarding their lake levels is, the result is that the DNR feels that they need to look at the water appropriation permits for various communities within a five-mile ring of White Bear Lake. And North St. Paul is 100% within that ring. And so what the DNR is going to start doing is examining your appropriation permit, the appropriateness of how much water you've been allotted, usage. There may become watering bans that the DNR ties to your community, which will be based not on anything happening in your community, but what's happening as it relates to the levels of White Bear Lake. If I'm not mistaken, I think what the DNR said was that had this order been in effect for the last 12 years, I think there would have been a watering ban from something like from 2012 to 2018 or along those lines. We don't know exactly what that means at this point or how, what the watering ban would look like. Is it a complete ban? Is it every other day, what it is? And so at this point, the city of North St. Paul, about a year and a half ago or so, when the DNR indicated that our appropriation permit was up, we did file a challenge on that, as did some other communities. So we have preserved our rights to push back on that. And so we will, I think, just kind of wait and see. You know, the DNR is in a position where they opposed the lawsuit brought by the White Bear Lake folks, but now they're in a position to enforce an order that they vigorously fought. And so I think it's going to be an interesting task to sort through what their position is in terms of what that order says, what enforcement looks like, and candidly, what they're going to put on communities. One of the more, I think, bigger and potentially scary issues out there is that they are talking to communities about preparing plans to go to alternate sources of water. So instead of using your groundwater, switching to surface water. And what does that mean? Does that mean we have to figure out how to pipe it in from the Mississippi? Who takes on those costs? Can our existing infrastructure handle that conversion? Things of that nature. And then just candidly, the, the logic of it. If, if the concern is water consumption, does it really make sense that we don't draw from an aquifer, but we then draw more off of the surface water such as the Mississippi? Because certainly if lowering water levels for bodies of water that have multiple use like White Bear Lake or the Mississippi, if we just switch from groundwater and go to surface water, what are the impacts for the Mississippi and the so-called downstream effects? And that isn't something anyone has really looked into at this point. I think some folks are just kind of marching ahead, well, this is what it says. Now, just because you develop a plan doesn't mean you have to implement it, but what is the level of, in detail required in that plan? You were talking about a document that may be just very simple, but it may involve candidly, a lot of engineering, a lot of study about infrastructure. So there's a lot of, I don't know as yet at this point, but it is something that the DNR has promised to be in touch with us soon. So I think we're kind of on wait and see mode, but it is, it is something that I think is very important to this community and something that, while it seems simple, may in fact have large and ranging impacts to your infrastructure and just how we deliver one of our core services, which is water.
It's kind of interesting. One of the questions was, or one of the solutions was, we'll just pump the groundwater or the surface water into White Bear Lake.
Right.
Just going to pipe into White Bear Lake from Mississippi, but that.
No, and I think I, I won't be able to adequately explain it, but I think there's concerns about once you take water from one place and introduce it to a water body of another, you have invasive species concerns and things of that nature. And so I understand it. You know, at, at the core of it, one of the objections to this, and a lot of folks think this is exactly what the law says, although the judge didn't, is that, you know, the level of White Bear Lake is important, but two things. One, if you look historically, that lake has fluctuated wildly, just naturally. And, and so we, you know, one of the arguments was, this is just one of its fluctuations. Two, what the law says is there's a priority and recreation does not come before service of water to a community when you're using it for drinking and things of that nature. And the judge disagreed with that argument also because the idea that we have to change how we give water to our residents for drinking and just everything else you use water for, again, a core service, so that a recreational body of water can have enough for docks and boating, doesn't make sense. And I'm, I'm oversimplifying it. Someone from the other side would, would start to pick at what I'm saying on my comments, but at a basic level, your water consumption is tied to the level of that lake and, and that's problematic candidly. So I think we'll soon learn what it means and what the next steps are. Right now, we are stuck dealing with this court order and the DNR and how they choose to enforce it. I know that nothing's going to happen this year, but I know that there's been some discussion about is there anything legislatively that can be done on it? And I don't think we have any clear answers on that at this point. So if there's questions on it, I'll certainly be willing to ask for it. I will apologize in advance. My answer may be, I can guess, but candidly, I don't know because the DNR hasn't laid out the roadmap yet.
Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, I think you gave a good synopsis of that. I mean, from my understanding, the whole lawsuit was brought because the, the individuals that lived around the lake claimed that the DNR negligently issued groundwater pumping permits that adversely affect how they enjoy their properties, essentially from my understanding.
Correct.
And so their solution was, okay, we're going to institute these changes to these other communities, which one could easily argue, well, now you're, you're adversely affecting how I can enjoy my property, could you not? I mean, I know this is, it would involve a separate lawsuit, but, you know, I think, you know, and, and as this lawsuit has moved along, it's been several years, we've seen the lake level go back up. If you go back and look back in history, the lake levels were down even lower when there was no development in the area.
Yep.
So I kind of want to ask, does this judge live on White Bear Lake, you know? But I think, you know, these ideas about, well, you know, North St. Paul, you better start gearing up to switch to St. Paul water, I think, would be on a very long, long list of, there'd be many other steps, including individual lawsuits to challenge this, you know? So I think we still need to be concerned about it and we still need to be at the table and be aware. But, you know, this idea that we're going to have to consider switching to surface water, to me, seems like a long shot in that there would be a lot of lawsuits that would take place, that would take many, many years before that were to happen. So just my opinion.
I, I don't disagree with you, Councilmember Thorson. I, switching to surface water is a big deal and it's expensive. And I don't think when the scientists in the room and the people who calculate this look at that solution, I think you can fall back and say, well, but the court order says what the court order says. I don't think the people who actually study things and look at the best way to deliver a product in a fashion that is both economical and environmentally friendly, don't see that as the solution. So it's a head scratcher, candidly. So, but it is what it is, you know, as they say, it is what it is at this point and we'll keep working on it. And it's something that, from my perspective, is high on my radar because it does have some implications and there's, there is perhaps a maneuvering that needs to be done.
It's amazing amount of cities, all of a sudden, they're affected by it. I mean, that, you know, the, the original lawsuit was at Five Mile.
Yep.
And now it's kind of extended because it connects these other cities and now.
Well, and there were a certain number of communities that were talked about in a certain study that then got roped in. And then now because they drew the circle at Five Miles, I mean, Woodbury was on the call and Stillwater was on the call. And, you know, so they're very curious about, well, wait a minute, what, what's going on here? We're still growing. We're talking about reducing our permits. What does this mean? And it's unclear, you know? But I, I do think there were certain things that were talked about and the, the DNR was clear. We aren't suggesting we're going to do this. We aren't going to suggest that this is the plan. But you start laying out like, well, but if these three communities or these four communities went on surface water, here's what our modeling suggests would happen. I mean, it's those kind of discussions, candidly, that you need to track very early on in the stages because things like suggestions like that can turn into plans quicker than you want. And so I think that's going to be something that's very important that we keep our eye on.
Were we using 100% of our allotted?
No.
No.
I didn't think we were.
Not even close.
I think our water consumption has gone down.
I didn't think so, but that isn't taken into consideration. The, the ask is decrease the current usage by?
To be determined.
One other thing I thought I could bring up, Highway 36 and 120. So ongoing issue, I, I think we've got some, I'll call it hopefully real traction, you know, after the last meeting that we had. I think people have seen the, not only the frustration that has been going on for so long, but really the desire to move this. So Senator Uyghur and Representative Lilly have been really working hard to, to work on drafting a bill for it. We've got McCollum's office involved from the federal level. And just today, I called the Ramsey County Engineer Ted Sonnaker because there was an email that came out on Friday with all this going back and forth. And MINDOT had said that they cannot take a lead role in this because they have no, no funding or anything available. So MINDOT would be only taking a supportive role. And so somebody's going to have to take, kind of take the reins to help usher this thing to get it out to the legislative ends and drafting bills or helping with that information. So that email happened on Friday and I noted that nobody responded on Friday and granted it was Easter coming and, but here we are today on Tuesday and I didn't see anything. So I started making some calls today because I don't want to see it drop and we've got the momentum. So talked with Ramsey County Engineer today and he's going to look into it to see if, and also we'd go to Washington County, but I, again, I just expressed our interest that if we can help, we, we will, but, so just wanted to let you know, we're continuing to push that along.
This blows my mind, that MINDOT, you know, because the funding is going to come from outside sources, it sounds like. I mean, it's part of the Biden $7 trillion, whatever it is that.
That's the other initiative right now. I mean, before we were talking about doing some bonding bills here, but now that this is coming, that may be another opportunity for us. And, you know, it talked about a $40 million cost and we're actually looking at the language for the bonding bill to be 50 million because by the time, you know, this comes to happening with the increased cost and other studies and things that have to go along the way so that we don't come up short sighted with that. But, yeah, we're continuing to push with it and stay on it.
Good, good.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, they can say that, but, you know, the last time they were here, they told us that, you know, because there's obviously site acquisitions that need to take place from private property. That can't happen unless they make it scheduled and that's them. Even if it's not funded, they can say, hey, we're going to do this in 2030. And they can put it on their schedule and they can say it's going to happen. And at least at that point, cities or counties or whoever can start negotiating with these entities that are identified. But that can't happen when, unless they say this is going to happen. So it's the same, you know, they say we're, we don't have the funding and then it, I mean, this has been going on for, since the 70s, right?
Since you were.
I wasn't even born.
Oh.
83 here, Terry. Yeah, but I, so I'm glad to hear that our state legislatures are getting on board. I mean, I brought up at the meeting the fact that there was a North St. Paul resident that was struck and killed at that intersection and then a year later, an Oakdale resident, you know, what, it's one of their most dangerous intersections in the metro area. I mean, what more do they need to make it a priority other than saying, well, if the pavement starts to, to blow up a bit, we, we'll go repave, but we're not going to take a huge undertaking. I get that, but the funding's not going to come from them anyway. So why can't they at least say, we're going to earmark it for whatever year and then we can all move along? But hopefully our state senators and representatives can get something going here finally.
Okay. So all I got, so we'll go into a closed session and need a motion to go into that. The meeting will be closed as permitted by Section 13D, 05 subdivision 3C to consider offers relating to the city's possible sale or lease of the community-centered building. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye. We will go into closed session. We'll take a couple minute break and go from there.